Muy buenos días. Gracias señor Padilla de Long Smith por estar presente. Estamos yendo para un congreso, nos está cerrando cinco edificios. Por favor, pasar la sala, se la reunión gracias.
...
...
...
...
Good morning everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers. And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today Tuesday, August 12th, 2003. The City Council meeting Thursday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public. And we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or here to the council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. We have nine members present, Wang Shao and Quorum. And we do have a couple of very special presentations and introductions to be made today. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Council members Lavang and Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm joined by Mr. Reyes today because there's a special event going on in his district. We've been involved with our Sister City program. As you know, we have a program of 20 sister cities in Los Angeles, according to Japan, which will hear from in a moment. But Guangzhou in China has been a sister city for over 20 years. And they presented a very, very special gift to Mr. Reyes's district at the Chinatown station of the Pasadena Gold Line. And this was a very, very big... Give a hand for that, I like that, James.
Un gran aplauso porque me encantó lo que hicieron.
This was a very, very important aspect of, I know, Mr. Reyes's commitment and those who worked on the gold line. To have the line reflect the community. And this special bell that has been placed there will only rival the bell in the 15th district. But I have some special welcomes here. And first and foremost, Jeffrey Chang, who is here. Jeffrey Chang, he is our president of Guangzhou Sister City. Jeffrey, say a few words real quick.
Council members and Mr. President, it's an honor to be here. To participate in this very important event, which is going to happen this afternoon in Chinatown. To celebrate the sister city friendship. Also, the grand opening of the gold line station in Chinatown. It's my tremendous pleasure to introduce to you our honored guest from Guangzhou, Mr. Fang Xiaoming, the Director General of Guangzhou Foreign Affairs Office, and also the Deputy Mayor Zhang Guangming.
Y representante del alcalde.
Mr. Reyes and I, as well as the mayor, would like to present you a special certificate of welcome. On your visit here, we're going to take a quick picture in just a moment. Before I call on our very special guest, someone who is as happy as walking on Cloud Nine because he's had such great success, leading the gold way to completion. It's our very own Councilman Ed Reyes, Councilmember Reyes.
First of all, thank my colleague, Councilwoman Lavang, for heading the Sister City Association. It's a lot of work. It's a great effort on his part to create the goodwill. With great effort to continue with the... The folks who are participating with us this morning. Today, thanks to the people who are participating. In China, the bell symbolizes peace and harmony. And this is a symbol that they will be illustrating, presenting to the whole city, the whole region. Every time someone gets off the gold line station, they will see the bell. They will see the spirit, and the great community of Chinatown. And for that, I want to thank them. And for their gratitude for their generosity and participation in the Sister City Association. Thank you.
Conocición de participantes.
Mr. Fang is the director of all affairs in Guangzhou. Please.
Eh, I'm from Guangzhou, Guangzhou. Today, I'm very honored to receive this invitation. I think this invitation is very honorable to Guangzhou.
Mr. President and honored members of the city council, today I'm very honored to be here and to receive, you know, this proclamation, which has a lot of meaning, not only to myself, but also to the city of Guangzhou.
This reminds me of the agreement between Guangzhou and Los Angeles, which we have signed together. For so many years, we have contributed to the cooperation of both states. So, I would like to thank the City Council, the members who gave us the award. Thank you, and welcome to Guangzhou.
Twenty-three years ago, in December 1981, the Sister City Agreement between LA and Guangzhou was signed by Mayor Bradley and Mayor Liang Lingguang in this very chamber. And within the past 22 years, a lot of exchanges have been conducted between the two cities. We appreciate that. And we'd like to thank you all, the council members, and Mr. President, and Councilman Lavang, and Councilman Reyes. We welcome you to visit Guangzhou, and we look forward to the promotion of the sister city friendship. Thank you very much.
Shae Shae, Shae Shae. Thank you, Mr. President. And also, that was along with Tom Bradley, was John Farro. And the two men, both six foot four, when they went to Guangzhou, they were quite a sight to see these great big giant Americans coming over. Very special time for both Mr. Bradley and Mr. Farro. We'll receive the delegation in the press room.
It's a very special agreement. 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 It's a proud resident of the 10th District and a proud Angelino. And I wanted you to join with me in recognizing Lance Corporal Randy Reyes. As a proud distinguished Marine, he doesn't want to say anything. He's just glad to be here. So we want to present, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, this resolution congratulating you for serving this country with distinction and honor. Thank you, Lance Corporal.
Thank you, Mr. Ladlo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm joined here by the Queen and her court for the 63rd Nisei Week celebration. And this is one of the nicest parts of my job. This weekend, as part of the 63rd Nisei Week Japanese festival, the historic Nisei Week parade took place. The parade, which I was lucky enough to be a part of, was only part of the excitement. Each year, Little Tokyo attracts Angelinos throughout our great city to partake in the excitement of the celebration of Japanese and Japanese American culture. The 63rd Annual Nisei Week supported the 150th anniversary of the United States-Japan relations. And the 2003 festival theme was Pride in Our Culture. Each year, many volunteers coordinate free-to-the-public activities and events during the two weekends of Nisei Week. One of those such volunteers is here with us today. Many of you know her. It's Frances Hashimoto. Frances, raise your hand. Festivities began this past Saturday, August 9, and run through the 17th with the Street Arts Festival, where unique crafts are sold, cultural exhibits displayed. Visitors got a great look at such things as sushi making by the Sushi Academy and had a great opportunity to taste all kinds of food at the JACC C.C. Food Courts, Japanese American Community Cultural Center. The evening's gala was topped off by the Queen's coronation held at the Japan-America Theater. The rest of the week will be filled with games, mixers, art exhibits, and the third annual car show. If you missed it this past weekend, there is still one more weekend, some more time to soak in the atmosphere of the cultural and have some fun with Nisei Week. But without further ado, I would like to introduce the women standing next to me. Not only are they intelligent and talented, they love their community, have strong community support, and it's easy to see why they are the Queen and her court. I would like to introduce Princess Allison Kimiko Nakaba from the... Sponsored by the San Fernando Valley Japanese American Community Center and Coordinating Council. Princess Julia Eva Hosoda, sponsored by the Little Tokyo Lions Club. Princess Linda Hatakyama, sponsored by the Japanese Restaurant Association. Miss Tomodachi Christy Higa, sponsored by the Orange County NKE Coordinating Council. First Princess Ellie Asuka Matfatrij, sponsored by the West Los Angeles JACL and Auxiliary and Venice Japanese Community Center. And last but not least, our lovely Queen, 2003 Nisei Week Queen Nicole Miyako Cherry, from the East San Gabriel Valley JACC. And I would like to ask the Queen to say a few words on behalf of her court.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Good evening, or good morning, everyone, sorry. But on behalf of the 2003 Nisei Week Court, I would just like to thank everyone for having us here today. And I would especially like to thank Janice Perry, Antonio Viragosa, Alex Padilla, and Tom LaBange for attending our 63rd Annual Nisei Week Festival Parade. And we encourage you all to come out next year and this coming weekend to celebrate and participate in our Japanese-American culture. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinal Ms. Garcetti, Gruhan, LaBange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viragosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 14 members present and a former Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. And members of the council, let me quickly announce that this is the last week before our council recess. So all matters approved today shall go forthwith. All matters approved today will be going forthwith. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Parks moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Ludlow moves, and Ms. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, since this is Tuesday, do you wish to do the flag salute?
Proceed with the meeting. Next item, please.
Mr. President, since this is Tuesday, do you wish to do the flag salute or have someone do the flag salute?
Let me call upon Councilmember Miskowski to give us the salute to the flag.
Would everyone please stand? Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. Next item, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is an item that has been requested to be continued. Item number 11, the applicant requests continuance to September 23.
Members request to continue item number 11. Seeing no objection, item 11 is continued.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 5 are items noted for public hearings. These are street lighting districts, either confirmations or ordinances abandoning the street lighting district.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these items. Therefore, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Are there members wishing to call any specials? Items 1 through 5. Seeing no requests for specials, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Items 1 through 5 are approved. I do have cards on item 6. Let's call that special.
The next items, Mr. President, are also items noted for public hearings. Item 7, 8, 9, and 10. Council should open the hearings and continue the hearing and ordinances to September 2nd.
Colleagues, any specials? I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on item 7 through 10. We shall therefore open the public hearing and without objection, continue these items to September 2nd.
The next items are items 12 through 15. They are also public hearing items, and I believe council has received the card on item number 12.
We have indeed. Item 12 will be called special to hear from members of the public on items 13 through 15. I have not received requests for public comment. We shall consider public comment open and closed. Item 13 through 15, any specials? Any specials on 13 through 15? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items which public hearings have been held, item 16 through 25. Item 25, there are two reports on the file, however, both concurs, so council may adopt both if it wishes.
Colleagues, 16 through 25 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Mr. Parks, Ms. Ludlow. Item 18. 18 calls special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? 23 calls special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Seeing none on the ballot of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held, items 26 through 47. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And without objection, these items shall be considered by the council today. I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these items satisfying a public hearing. Are there questions to call any specials? Ms. Han.
Let's call item 45 for special, please.
45 calls special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? Items 26 through 47. With the exception of item 45, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 48 is also an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes for consideration.
And we do have cards on item 48. Without objection, we shall consider this item today and call it special to hear from members of the public. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number 6 was called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
This is item 6 now before us. Colleagues, and the council calls forward Joshua Kaplan, followed by Art Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mr. President. Members of the council, I'm an attorney representing the applicant and filled out a card only out of caution.
Any specials on thirteen through fifteen? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved.
Items which public hearings have not been held, items sixteen through twenty-five. Item twenty-five, there are two reports on the file, however, both concurs, so council may adopt both if it wishes.
Calling sixteen through twenty-five now before us. Public hearings have not been held in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Mr. Parks. Item number eighteen. Twenty-one and twenty-two call special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Ludlow. Item number eighteen. Eighteen call special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Twenty-three call special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Seeing none on the ballot of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-six through forty-seven, ten votes required for consideration.
And without objection, these items shall be considered by the council today. I do not have requests members of the public to address the council on these items satisfying a public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials? Ms. Han.
Let's call item forty-five call special, please.
Forty-five call special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? Items twenty-six through forty-seven. With the exception of item forty-five, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number forty-eight is also an item which public hearing has not been held, ten votes for consideration.
And we do have cards on item forty-eight. Without objection, we shall consider this item today and call a special to hear from members of the public. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number six was called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
This is item six now before us, colleagues, and the council calls forward Joshua Kaplan, followed by Art Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm an attorney representing the applicant and filled out a card only out of caution. If there were any questions, we would try to respond to them, but I understand that there would hopefully be emotion.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good morning. The same I'm here in case you have any questions regarding the out request.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number six. Members wishing to be heard on item number six, beginning with Mr. Cárdenas.
This item is relative to a liquor license for a supermarket, not a small market, not a liquor store, but a supermarket, which the sale of liquor is only going to be a small fraction of the floor space and the activity going on there. I've recommended that we approve this item based on the understanding from the supermarket owners, John's Market, that they will be limiting the number, the hours in which they will be selling liquor and many other items that they agreed to hold heartedly and are willing to take on when it comes to their ABC license. In addition to that, I agree that we need to make sure that we monitor these licenses and that at the same time, be it understood that in the sixth council district, we are not looking for a proliferation of licenses, but certainly looking at them on an individual case by case basis, where in fact, the owners have agreed to be responsible. In addition to that, they've agreed to an evaluation in the first twelve months of their operation. We hope and expect that they will abide by all of the agreement and we look forward to them having a prosperous business, including the ability to responsibly sell liquor at their establishment. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? If not, Mr. Cárdenas moves approval. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twelve called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item number twelve now before us, and the council calls forward Eleanor Forster, Catherine Faracholi, and Frank Puliteo. Please come forward, please.
Hello, council members. My name, can I speak now? My name is Catherine Faracholi. I own the lots twenty-one and twenty-two near this facility, which to me has a very largely overextended facility, but it's already been approved. I also want to say for the record that this hearing should have been held prior to the zoning administrators' hearing with regard to the vacation of these alleys. I didn't have a chance to provide exhibits because I got started on this a little too late, but if council members need the exhibits with regard to the sequence of events that have taken place, I can provide those tomorrow. Right now, my concern is the alley that will be vacated and the alley to be installed. There's no provisions there for safety mechanisms, no blinking lights that have been proposed, no mirrors, no anything. And as it is, at the other end of the alley, when you're making a turn, I've been hit or almost hit many times. So I would like to, before this is approved, that that safety mechanisms, that a proposal be made that these be installed, either by the city or by the Toblerone Settlement House.
Thank you.
And I've been informed that this is a zoning matter, but still, I would like you to consider this. And I am talking with Janice Han's office, and they've told me that they are working on this with the Toblerone. But I want this as a matter of record that this is a safety issue. This large expanded facility has been allowed to take place, which will be, the present buildings will be torn down, and they're going from a fifteen-car parking lot to fifty cars. And so this is why I'm here, that consideration be made with regard to negotiating through this alley and especially at the intersection, as to how the two alleys will intersect, both the one, the intersection part of the alley near Grand and also the one near Gaffey Avenue, Gaffey Street, rather.
Thank you very much. Let's hear now from Eleanor Forster, followed by Frank Puliteo and Julianne Finney.
Yeah, I agree with Catherine, but I also want to say that I did not get any notices of these hearings, and even though I've had this, the same address for many, many years. And Santa Cruz is a very narrow street, and there, at the present, there are cars parked on both sides. I would like to suggest that that could possibly be made into a one-way street, so that it'll be, make it a lot safer for ingress and egress. Also, if there are some warning signs or signals, it would be very helpful. And therefore, I would like you to take this into submission before approving this vacation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Señora. Parking on one side of Santa Cruz. Right.
Please leave your comments.
Gracias por sus comentarios.
My name is Frank Puliteo. I'm the architect for Toblerone. And presently, there's a ten-foot alley, L-shaped alley that goes onto Santa Cruz. Con la configuración de L, que sale hasta la calle Santa Cruz. Este callejón está en medio de nuestro proyecto. New campus that will enhance that whole area. And in view of this ten-foot alley, actually, Toblerone is giving up twenty feet and providing a twenty-foot alley that will go to Santa Cruz. The safety is far greater than what it is now. The alley is only ten feet wide, and now we're providing a twenty-foot alley that goes to Santa Cruz. Santa Cruz is a narrow street with long, with a small area where the driver, the street peeling is, and it has on every side of it, it has fourteen-foot, first they have a six-foot sidewalk, and then they have another eight feet of grass, which really could be smaller, and they could widen out that Santa Cruz Boulevard, and that's what they're concerned with. But presently, we're not doing anything more than what they're using now, except it's a twenty-foot alley that's going to go out to Santa Cruz instead of a ten-foot alley, which I think is a lot better and not safer.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Julianne Finney.
Good morning. I am the director of the caporal campaign at Toblerone Settlement House for the last three and a half years. With the guidance of an architectural committee and careful years of evaluating our clients' needs, we've made each decision along the way, including the need to move this alley and dedicate a wider and safer alley. We are not opposed in any shape or form of any additional safety measures. We simply want to do what the residents want. We've held a meeting with the neighborhood, and they have insinuated that they're interested in considering various options, such as making Santa Cruz a one-way street, or possibly eliminating parking on one side, or possibly widening the street. And depending on the options that the residents choose, would depend on the appropriate safety measures with the alley, and we're in support of whatever's best for the residents of that community.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Turning now to council discussion. Chair recognizes Councilmember Han.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I, first of all, want to say that I'm standing in support of what we have before us today, and that's a vacation of an alley and the creation of another location for an alley and a parking lot for fifty cars. And I'm in tremendous support of Toblerone Settlement House. This is an organization that deals with nineteen thousand clients per year. The majority of those clients are at or below the poverty level. They do after-school programs, they counsel families, domestic violence issues. They are part, one of our contractors for our gang intervention here in the city of Los Angeles, and clearly, after all these years, the need is rising. I would love to say that they have less clients to deal with, but the fact of the matter is, things are not getting better in terms of people's poverty levels, and things are not getting better in terms of the issues that families are dealing with on a daily basis. And this organization serves a population in the Harbor area that really no one else does. So this expansion program is important, it's necessary, and it really does add value to what we're trying to do to improve people's lives in the Harbor area. And frankly, the parking is a terrible situation in this area anyway, and I sympathize with you, but I actually think a parking lot for fifty cars, as opposed to a ten-foot, would actually improve the parking around the area, and hopefully, less of the clients and those who use the services will be parking on your streets. Two issues which I always am concerned about, one is notification of people when we do projects in Los Angeles. And I'm a big believer in, the more information, the more outreach, the more meetings, ultimately, the better the project. And it bothers me that you might have thought you were not notified in terms of a hearing that we've already had. I will always work on more information, better postcards that we send to people. I think some of our zoning hearing postcards that we send to people never are read and get tossed, and they sometimes they look like junk mail. So I'd like to really work with our department on how we notify people in terms of a project. As you said, I am working with the neighborhood. I believe we can improve some things at this point. And we've spoken to those at Toblerone who are more than willing to work and improve some safety issues with the new alley. I am complete support of always making sure that traffic, number one, is taken into account in people's lives and safety as they move forward. So it sounds like we're willing to work on some of those issues. I think that it's an interesting idea of a one-way street. We've already met with our Department of Transportation to go out and look at that as a possibility to ease traffic flow, and that might be a good solution. So the point is, that isn't set in concrete right now. I am approving this, asking for my colleagues to approve this vacation issue for the forebit. But the process is not over by any means, and we're willing to work with the neighborhood to make sure that ultimately, this is a project that everybody is comfortable with and that we can all sit with. So thank you for coming down to City Council today.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Colleagues, we have the item before us. Any further discussion? No, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item twelve is approved. Item twelve has been approved. Before proceeding to the next item, let me recognize Councilmember Perry for another instruction.
Thank you much, Mr. President, for allowing me the privilege of introducing the national chairperson for the NAACP, the chairperson Julianne Bond, who joined us this morning on the steps of the First Street in City Hall to announce the no on Proposition 54 campaign. I'd like to ask Mr. Chair if he would say a few words about the NAACP campaign and how we can all understand this proposition better, so we can vote in an informed and intelligent manner.
Thank you a great deal. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm going to try to be very, very brief. I don't think I have to argue here about why Proposition 54 is bad for California. I think you all recognize that when collection of data is denied, then the presence of discrimination cannot be determined. And that, I think, is in the back of the minds of the sponsors of this proposal. It is insidious, it is evil, it unfortunately appears attractive to many, many people. So all of us who believe it ought to go down in defeat have to do all we can to wage a massive education campaign between now and Election Day, and then a massive get-out-the-vote effort on Election Day. And if we work together, many of you were on the stairs a few moments ago. Standing behind me at the podium was literally a rainbow coalition of Californians, people of every race, every gender, every ethnicity, many, many religions. That's the kind of coalition that makes this country great, and that's the kind of coalition that will defeat 54. Thank you all.
Before I leave, I have a couple of members who want to offer a few words as well. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bond, for being here. You're one of the people who's inspired me to go into public service. We met a couple of times, and I didn't get a chance to tell you, but I was a student, an undergraduate, when I first heard you speak, and a speech you gave at Columbia University is part of the reason I'm standing here today, and it's a real honor to have you here, to be able to collaborate with you on this issue, as we did outside. And thank you for being such an inspiring voice of justice for me personally, but for this community, the city, the state, the nation as well. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cárdenas.
I want to thank you, Mr. Bond, for your presence here today and your leadership, which spans a great deal of time, yet at the same time, we are today in a very difficult time where, once again, someone or a community is trying to deceive Californians. And worse than that, trying to say that if they can get this done in California with Proposition 54, they're going to try to spread it around the country. In my opinion, this is about blindness, in the worst sense, for society and for all of us, should this proposition succeed. And hopefully, with our statements today and through the next fifty-plus days, we're going to prove to California that Proposition 54 is just wrong, and it's something that truly is going to hurt not only us but future generations. And one thing that I'd like to mention, not only is it morally wrong, is in fact, something that is going to hurt future generations, very simply put, with our medical research, a lot of people don't understand that on the basis of particular medicine, people react differently to medicine, and these little tidbits of information do in fact culminate in our ability to eradicate, or hopefully someday eradicate, things such as cancer and many other diseases that afflict every person, regardless of their color, or their gender, or wherever they come from. And one of the things as well, I'm very proud to say that I'm one of the co-chairs in opposition to Proposition 54, so I look forward to working with you and taking advice from your leadership on how we can defeat this terrible measure. So thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bond, it is such an honor to have you here. I want to commend Councilmember Perry for bringing you to the council chambers this morning. I just had a moment to reflect with Mr. Bond about my first opportunity to meet him. We were on a little puddle jumper flying from Atlanta to Meridian, Mississippi in the late eighties, commemorating the twenty-five-year anniversary of the heinous Ku Klux Klan murders of Chaney Goodman and Schwerner, three young civil rights workers, who were down there doing voter registration during Freedom Summer. You've been such an amazing icon in this nation in terms of fighting for the moral center instead of the political center, and it's something that I think your presence here in California this week is so desperately in need of. We need to step up and join with you in doing everything that we can to fight this initiative. I'm a little concerned about the lateness of our efforts here in California, and I think there's nothing that dramatizes the need to get out more than having a real legend such as yourself here. And the one thing I do recall about you is that you are more humble than anything, and having people pay homage to you is something that you don't do well with, but we're so honored to have you here, and also with Alice Huffman here, great leader on a statewide level. Your presence is so welcome, and we thank you so much for what you're doing.
Councilmember Ludlow, it's often said of me that I'm a legend in my own mind.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bond, I just want to, at the risk of belaboring, I want to repeat in here what I said outside, it's such a tremendous privilege for me, as someone who admired you and indeed studied you and what you've done when I was in school, to be with you here today and to see that you've come to California for such an important purpose, to raise awareness about this so-called racial privacy initiative. Because as we raise awareness about it, I have no doubt that people are, it's going to go south real quickly, and having you here really energizes all of us, and it certainly energizes me. And once again, I just want to thank you for everything you did to change this country into a country that I am proud to raise my children in, and that is in large measure because of you and what you did. You're really an inspiration to all of us, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Bond, it's a pleasure to arise and thank you for your presence. For me, I have a real sense of urgency. When I look at how Proposition 87 was passed, it was passed because certain people were depending on the ignorance of others, and the fact that this bill promotes ignorance. When it talks about what it doesn't want to do, especially in an area like Los Angeles, when you have the second-largest population of Mexicans, other Mexico City in Los Angeles, when you have the second-largest population of Koreans other than Seoul, Korea in Los Angeles, we have differences. We should understand that, and having that data is important. And to laugh at that kind of ignorance to prevail is just unhealthy for our city, unhealthy for our country, and those who promote this want us to be ignorant, and we need to fight that. So I'm glad you're stepping up. I'm glad that NAACP is stepping up, but other groups need to stand up as well. We're running out of time, and I think we need to continue working on the level of informing people what this really means. I just want to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bond, as I said out in front, really appreciated sharing the mic. You've been a legend for so long, it was a must-see when, years ago, when you were in public office, to watch you on television and debate and run for President of the United States and a variety of other things that you've done that made us all proud. I think that, one of the things that I think about is a remarkable time in my life, is a while back, I had a chance to go to Atlanta, and in one lobby of the hotel, there was Julianne Bond, Andy Young, Mrs. King, and Maynard Jackson standing within about ten feet of each other. A remarkable place in history to be standing there and just see on a day-to-day basis people that are just going about their daily lives, but yet having the stature that you have. I appreciate you taking an active role in this, particularly in California, where we have the largest number, and as Mr. Reyes says, the largest number of ethnicity and diversity. A hundred languages are spoken in the city of Los Angeles on every given day. And at the time, the diversity is growing greater. We have an individual that thinks that we should be blind about the existence, and I think it's important that we do educate the public. In fact, as we talk about our numbers, recently, I was speaking at a group, and I said, we have the second-largest group of every ethnicity in the world in California, other than their home country. A young man raised his hand, and he said, there are more Samoans in the LA region than there are Samoa. So it gives us an impression of just what the diversity is, the languages. I appreciate your effort, and you have honored us today with your presence, and certainly, we look forward to working with you on other issues in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I too want to rise, particularly to voice my opposition to Proposition 54, and to thank Julianne Bond for coming and raising awareness. Because what I said earlier was, unfortunately, the October seventh election has, up until this point, been about one thing. We have a child star, a porn star, and a movie star running for governor of California, and that's what the media is focusing on. And while most of California and the nation is watching us, they're focusing on the circus around the recall. And that's why it's so important that you came out here today to Los Angeles to raise awareness and to tell people that actually, Proposition 54 has a huge impact on the future of California, really, and even who is our governor for the next few years. Proposition 54 really can take us a huge step backwards and lose the major reforms that we have been fighting for for so long, not only in our educational system, but with our health care. And this is really about saving lives. And so I really want to thank you for being out here and urge all Californians to really go out on October seventh and have their voices heard about the future of this great state. But thank you for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I was pleased to reconnect with Mr. Bond. We had met while I was at DreamWorks and talking about all the things you were doing at NAACP and how we could work together. And this morning, so many of my colleagues were there, and people who didn't have a chance to watch it, if it's not shown on TV tonight, Julianne Bond's remarks were extraordinary and really hit the point about the impact of what Proposition 54 is going to have on the state of California, and that we cannot be fooled about what Ms. Connolly has put on this ballot, that it is going to impact every single one of our lives, and that we talked about health care and the importance of information relative to, and I know Ms. Han mentioned this, relative to issues or diseases that affect primarily either minorities or women, age, et cetera, that we critically need that information. And we need to get the message out. We have a short period of time with the efforts of Mr. Bond and the rest of the representatives that are here today. We are all going to work together to make sure that the truth gets out about the impact of this particular proposition. So I just wanted to add my words of congratulations and what I know Mr. Garcetti talked about. You are somewhat of a legend to all of us and your activities and impact you've had on this entire country. So glad that you're here in Los Angeles today and helping us with this fight.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Just looking around this room, I think there's one lesson that Proposition 54 ought to teach us. Look at the white women in this room. The white women in this room are at greater risk of breast cancer than any other group of women in America. And the African-American women in this room are at greater risk of dying from breast cancer than any other women in America. Why don't the sponsors of Proposition 54 want these white women, want these African-American women to know the risks they face? Because if it passes, they won't know. We won't be able to formulate strategies to direct them to treatment, to direct them away from harmful environments. We won't be able to solve this awful, awful problem. This is greater than a problem of just listing how poorly or how well minorities are doing. This is a threat to the health care, the educational status, to all of the gains that we fought and died for over the last several decades. And I very much appreciate your opposition, all the statements we've heard here. The mayor's presence at the press conference earlier today, he said it best, Prop 54 is wrong for California. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for indulging us, and I also wanted to recognize NAACP State Conference President Alice Huffman, Elena Bong here for Women Against the Recall, Jackie Dupont Walker from Ward A.M., Gregory Moore, who is the NAACP National Voter Fund Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number eighteen was called special by Councilmember Ludlow.
Let's hold that on the desk.
Item twenty-one was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a technical amendment for twenty-one and twenty-two on the illegal dumping reward fund that's been created since October two oh two. Currently, there's no funds in that account, and I'd like to move that on item
I just want to clarify, that's the anti-John Law. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on item 22. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That's 21 and 22 approved.
For item 21 and 22, they have been approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Lalo. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise on this item and do a verbal amendment to ask that the, well, first, let me thank Target Corporation and Bernard Pedro in particular, in their spirit of trying to help move arts programs in the community. And the verbal amendment would be split equal between the Performing Arts Center and the Lula Washington Dance Company for the Target Arts Program. And so that would be my motion.
Okay, colleagues, a verbal amending motion. Certain objection to that? If not, we'll consider the item as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 18 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 23 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Briefly, just wanted to call this special, it's a reward for a citizen who helped us apprehend and go after a tagger, graffiti tagger, in Hollywood. And just building on what we were just talking about before, this is something which is, I wanted to always publicize, let people know that there are these rewards from the city when you can find somebody and help the police get folks who are tagged in a given area. It's a $1,000 reward going to an individual out there in the community. I don't want to name that individual for obvious reasons, but we want to thank him for his vigilance and his advocacy. And let all Angelinos know that they can do this too. And would-be taggers know that we're looking out, and we're looking for you. And we want to make sure that all of our communities remain clean. And we know how debilitating it is for many of our communities, especially in Hollywood area when the tagging just comes time and time and time again. And we hope to send a signal to those vandals who vandalize our public property, our common areas, that we will not stand for that and that you will be prosecuted. So urge your aye vote and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Are the members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item, please.
Item number 45 was called special by Councilmember Han. Thank you, Mr. President. This is unfortunately a different kind of reward. This is to offer $25,000 for information leading to the arrest of a hit-and-run driver in San Pedro. Unfortunately, we have been having some terrible instances in San Pedro in regards to traffic. Where Alida Moore was hit and killed is almost the same neighborhood that suffered the loss of a young boy, Andrew Silver, just a few months ago by another hit-and-run driver. Alida was a single mother. She leaves behind two small children. She was crossing the street to go across the street to get some groceries or snacks to bring back to her kids. And unfortunately, was hit and killed by a car, which they're saying the description is a red Chevy Silverado. And the driver, according to witnesses, has long curly hair and a goatee. And the reason we offer these rewards is because the police department says it really is one of the tools that they find most useful. Somebody somewhere saw something, heard something, talked to somebody else who saw something, and we're hoping that this $25,000 reward will bring forward the information the police department needs to find this killer who is at large right now. It will not bring back Alida to her children. It will not bring her back to her family. But hopefully, we can have some closure to this and bring justice where justice needs to be. So I ask your support in offering this $25,000 reward. And know that those who are in the harbor area, maybe watching this program, we have a problem with speeders in San Pedro. We instituted a campaign called Slow Down San Pedro. We're working with the Department of Transportation to look for potential accident sites before they happen. We're putting stop signs. We're installing traffic signals. Unfortunately, this intersection is one of those that we had looked at. And we're hoping to move quickly on installing traffic calming measures throughout the harbor area. I will not give up my work to ultimately have a community that is safe and is not plagued by drivers who drive too fast and kill innocent people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Are the members wishing to be heard on item 45? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 48 was called special and is supposed to serve our cards from the public.
Colleagues, item 48 now before us, and the council does call forward Elaine Lemke, followed by Jacqueline Richard, Jean Shapiro, Marshall Edelstein, and other speakers to follow. If I can ask you to form a line behind the podium, I would really appreciate that.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Elaine Lemke. I'm here on behalf of Singular Wireless to oppose taking this up and to oppose, and in support of the project, actually, that was approved by the Area Planning Commission. I'm not here to talk about the details of the project. I'm actually Singular's litigation counsel. And as you may or may not know, this project was initially denied. Singular filed a lawsuit which has been stayed because Singular then went back to the city and worked with the city to revise the plan, to address the concerns that were raised by the city. Singular believes it addressed those concerns and subsequently its project with those concerns addressed and with new conditions imposed by the city was approved by the Area Planning Commission. I'm here basically to speak about an issue apparently that was raised by project opponents who indicated that the city could deny this project under the Federal Communications Act as long as another carrier provided service to the area. I'm here to tell you that we strongly disagree with that, and that would be a very serious bone of contention in the lawsuit. I have submitted a letter to councilmembers that address that issue. But very, very briefly, under the Telecommunications Act, there is a provision that says a city may not deny a permit if it has the effect of providing service to customers. The Third Circuit has, in fact, has a ruling that says if somebody provides coverage, that meets that provision of the Act. However, there are other courts in what I believe are more reasoned opinions who state that that cannot be the case. And part of that is because the Telecommunications Act also has an anti-discrimination provision that requires cities to treat different providers the same and the same manner. And in those two provisions together, you cannot point to someone else providing coverage as a basis for denying coverage in this situation. In addition, in the case law under the Telecommunications Act, cities are required to base their decisions on approval or denial on the city's own municipal ordinances that guide the telecommunications decisions. There is nothing in the LA City Municipal Ordinance that allows the city to deny one provider coverage if someone else has provided coverage. And Mario Musso, who I believe you called, is here to address the technical details of the facility. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you for being available. Jacqueline Richard is our next speaker. And as she comes forward, if I can ask the following individuals to please form a line behind her at the podium, we will hear from Jean Shapiro, Marshall Edelstein, Marty Edelstein, and Frank Shapiro.
I want to thank the city council for allowing us to be here and present our feelings about this issue. And my thanks to Wendy Grue for filing the 245 for us to be here and be before you today. We've given you some papers that I'd like to refer to on page nine of the papers that we've given you. Item number seven, the Telecommunications Act does not allow providers to construct any and all towers it deems necessary to compete with other telecommunication providers in the area. And the goal of the Telecommunications Act of expanding wireless service does not trump all other considerations, including local government's autonomy. And in addition, the Second Circuit has held that allowing all applicants to be approved is a disincentive for wireless service providers to develop and deploy new technology that will provide better transmission and reception with less intrusive towers, which is the goal of the Telecommunications Act, to increase innovation. And speaking about this, we know that in this area already, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile, and Sprint all have coverage in this area already.
...tratar de ayudar a iniciar programas de artes en la comunidad y el cambio oral es que dividamos los fondos igualmente entre la compañía de baile y el centro de artes.
Okay, colleagues, a verbal amending motion. Certain objection to that? If not, we'll consider the item as amended. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Item eighteen as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-three was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Briefly, just wanted to call this special. It's a reward for a citizen who helped us apprehend and go after a tagger, graffiti tagger, in Hollywood. And just building on what we were just talking about before, this is something which is, I wanted to always publicize, let people know that there are these rewards from the city when you can find somebody and help the police get folks who are tagged in a given area. It's a thousand-dollar reward. Going to an individual out there in the community. I don't want to name that individual for obvious reasons, but we want to thank him for his vigilance, for his advocacy, and let all Angelinos know that they can do this too. And would-be taggers know that we're looking out and we're looking for you and we want to make sure that all of our communities remain clean. We know how debilitating it is for many of our communities, especially in Hollywood area when the tagging just comes time and time and time again. We hope to send a signal to those vandals who vandalize our public property, our common areas, that we will not stand for that and that you will be prosecuted. So urge your eye vote, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number forty-five was called special by Councilmember Han.
This is Han.
Senator Han.
Item forty-five.
Senator Han, asunto cuarenta y cinco.
Thank you, Mr. President. This unfortunately is a different kind of reward. This is a different kind of reward. This is to offer twenty-five thousand dollars for information to the arrest of a hit-and-run driver in San Pedro. Unfortunately, we have been having some terrible instances in San Pedro in regards to traffic. Where Alida Moore was hit and killed is almost the same neighborhood that suffered the loss of a young boy, Andrew Silver, just a few months ago by another hit-and-run driver. Alida was a single mother. She leaves behind two small children. She was crossing the street to go across the street to get some groceries or snacks to bring back to her kids. And unfortunately, was hit and killed by a car, which they're saying the description is a red Chevy Silverado. And the driver, according to the witnesses, has long curly hair and a goatee. And the reason we offer these rewards is because the police department says it really is one of the tools that they find most useful. Somebody, somewhere, saw something, heard something, talked to somebody else who saw something, and we're hoping that this twenty-five thousand dollar reward will bring forward the information the police department needs to find this killer. It will not bring her back to her children. It will not bring her back to her family. But hopefully, we can have some closure to this and bring justice where justice needs to be. So I ask your support in offering this twenty-five thousand dollar reward. And know that those of you who are in the harbor area, maybe watching this program, we have a problem with speeders in San Pedro. We've instituted a campaign called Slow Down San Pedro. We're working with the Department of Transportation to look for potential accident sites before they happen. We're putting stop signs. We're installing traffic signals. Reductores de velocidad. Semahorros. Es una que hemos considerado. Esperamos rápidamente poder instalar medidas para reducir la velocidad de tráfico. Yo no dejaré de luchar para tener una comunidad segura y no donde no haya.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Other members wishing to be heard on item forty-five? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number forty-eight was called special and is supposed to serve our cards from the public.
Colleagues, item forty-eight now before us, and the council does call forward Elaine Lemke, followed by Jacqueline Richard, Jean Shapiro, Marshall Edelstein, and other speakers to follow. If I can ask you to form a line behind the podium, I would really appreciate that.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Elaine Lemke. I'm here on behalf of Singular Wireless to oppose taking this up and to oppose, and in support of the project, actually, that was approved by the Area Planning Commission. I'm not here to talk about the details of the project. I'm actually Singular's litigation counsel, and as you may or may not know, this project was initially denied. Singular filed a lawsuit, which has been stayed, because Singular then went back to the city and worked with the city to revise the plan, to address the concerns that were raised by the city. Singular believes it addressed those concerns, and subsequently, its project, with those concerns addressed and with new conditions imposed by the city, was approved by the Area Planning Commission. I'm here basically to speak about an issue, apparently, that was raised by project opponents who indicated that the city could deny this project under the Federal Communications Act as long as another carrier provided service to the area. I'm here to tell you that we strongly disagree with that, and that would be a very serious bone of contention in the lawsuit. I have submitted a letter to councilmembers that addressed that issue. But very, very briefly, under the Telecommunications Act, there is a provision that says a city may not deny a permit if it has the effect of providing service to customers. The Third Circuit has, in fact, has a ruling that says if somebody provides coverage, that meets that provision of the act. However, there are other courts, in what I believe are more reasoned opinions, who state that that cannot be the case. And part of that is because the Telecommunications Act also has an anti-discrimination provision that requires cities to treat different providers the same and the same manner. And in those two provisions together, you cannot point to someone else providing coverage as a basis for denying coverage in this situation. In addition, in the case law under the Telecommunications Act, cities are required to base their decisions on approval or denial on the city's own municipal ordinances that guide the telecommunications decisions. There is nothing in the L.A. City Municipal Ordinance that allows the city to deny one provider coverage if someone else has provided coverage.
Thank you.
And Mario Musso, who I believe you called, is here to address the technical details of the facility, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you for being available. Jacqueline Richard is our next speaker. And as she comes forward, if I can ask the following individuals to please form a line behind her at the podium, we will hear from Jean Shapiro, Marshall Edelstein, Marty Edelstein, and Frank Shapiro.
I want to thank the city council for allowing us to be here and present our feelings about this issue, and my thanks to Wendy Gruehl for filing the two forty-five for us to be here and be before you today. We've given you some papers that I'd like to refer to on page nine of the papers that we've given you. Item number seven, the Telecommunications Act does not allow providers to construct any and all towers it deems necessary to compete with other telecommunication providers in the area. And the goal of the Telecommunications Act of expanding wireless service does not trump all other considerations, including local government's autonomy. And in addition, the Second Circuit has held that allowing all applicants to be approved is a disincentive for wireless service providers to develop and deploy new technology that will provide better transmission and reception with less intrusive towers, which is the goal of the Telecommunications Act, to increase innovation. And speaking about this, we know that in this area already, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile, and Sprint, all have coverage in this area already. Also, regarding a gap in service on page ten of the items that we've given you, the goal of the Telecommunications Act and the Federal Communications Commission is to provide adequate coverage, not to guarantee that every carrier has access to every area. That would just be a proliferation of telecommunication companies all being in competition with one another and inundating residential neighborhoods and neighborhoods to be in competition with one another.
May I ask you to conclude so we can hear from the other speakers, please?
What?
May I ask you to conclude so we can hear from the other speakers, please?
Okay. Well, there were a couple of more points also. But they can pick up those points, too.
Sure.
I am a Realtor, and on the first page, page nine, it's a valid point, really, to deny a permit based on property values, and this mainly is a residential neighborhood, and it will affect property values. And since there's already coverage in the area, and this is not aesthetically pleasing to and could affect property values in the area, that by placing this tower in the area, it is injurious to the people that own property in the area.
Thank you.
And we do have one hundred and sixty-six signatures on a petition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jean Shapiro. I just want to let you know that I oppose the installation of the antenna by Singular Wireless in my neighborhood, and I would like to relinquish my time to the rest of the members in my group. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Marshall Edelstein. I live in the Sherman Oaks area, and I want to thank the council for allowing me the time, and in particular, Councilwoman Wendy Gruehl and her staff for their assistance in creating time to speak to you today with the hope that the factual information that I and my constituents present to you will weigh heavily upon your ultimate decision to overturn and deny the adoption of findings in the case ENV two zero zero two dash six two four zero dash CE involving Singular Wireless's attempt to install an unmanned telecommunications antenna in the community that is ninety-eight percent residential and already has no dead space. And the people that live in that area with cell phones have complete operational service that use servers such as Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Sprint. I'm proud to live in the state of California in a city like Los Angeles that sets standards for the rest of the nation in adopting policies that create better environment for the cities by creating laws that limit air, water, and land pollution, and control visual light and noise pollution. And I've seen numerous changes and improvements over the years. Residential communities can prevent abundant liquor stores, bars, strip joints from opening, and they can stop auto repair places from working and making noise at unreasonable hours. We have a city and state phone numbers that we can talk to live people to register legitimate complaints and know that we will get results. The people that live in our community cannot understand how all these rights exist, and yet Singular Wireless can put up this unsightly antenna for their own needs that does not serve the community need whatsoever, since there is already ample solar coverage in the area, and can operate, and they can operate and service their equipment twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, without any regard for the peace and quiet of the people that live in the community, and certainly using bright lights to work in the dark, nor will they have anyone to register complaint with to get immediate response in the event of an emergency or to clean up graffiti placed by taggers. There is legal precedents that give you the grounds and justifiable right and the duty to deny and overturn the findings of the Valley Area Planning Commission. We ask that you protect the values of the people of this community and their property and welfare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
I'm Marty Edelstein, and I'm against the installation of Singular, but I'm going to relinquish my time to the other speaker. Thank you.
My name is Frank Shapiro, and I'm representing the neighborhood of Sherman Oaks and Van Nuys. The representative from Singular came up here and told you that the law is on Singular's side. We've given you an eleven-page document from an attorney who represented the citizens of Bel Air when they fought Sprint, and every single paragraph is backed up by legal precedent at the appellate level. On page seven, there is legal precedent under section two for denying a permit with only a mere centella of evidence of negative impact to the community. And we feel there's more than a mere centella of negative impact. There's the aesthetic problems of this huge tower that they're going to put on top of a donut shop. There's the property value issue. There's the fact that there are two schools, one of which is a preschool, which is located about fifty feet away from the antenna. There is a hundred and sixty-six signatures against it, and I guarantee you that there's probably another five or six hundred that we could bring you if we had to. The neighborhood is opposed to this project. The Singular people are telling you that they would be discriminated against if you denied them the permit. On page ten of the document we presented you, section nine says denying a permit will not constitute discrimination. In this case, they're referring to Sprint, but I think it's also applicable to Singular. There's a lot of parallels between the situation in Bel Air and the situation in Sherman Oaks. They're almost identical. In terms of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, and I'll conclude with this, the whole purpose of that act, or one of the main purposes of that act, is to have wireless companies come up with more creative ways of serving the public. And each company does not have to provide a hundred percent coverage to the citizens. The Telecommunications Act says that there can be gaps. When you go and get a wireless service, your service cannot guarantee you a hundred percent coverage. That's a given. The law also says that if there are any companies in an area that are serving that area, a gap does not exist, and we've shown that there are four companies that already serve the area. The Telecommunications, excuse me, Telecommunications Act wants wireless companies to be creative rather than to just bulldoze their way into a neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And we have received one more card from Mario Musso on this item. Mr. Musso will be our final speaker.
Good morning, Mario Musso. I'm representing Singular Wireless in terms of the design and implementation of our site. And I would just like to state that our company has worked very closely with the planning department, the staff, and the commission in terms of developing a very aesthetic site on a one-story commercial piece of property on the corner of Kessler and Burbank. The actual design of the site is articulated in terms of both the texture, color of the existing building. What we're doing is we're putting an eight-foot penthouse atop the existing building, and antennas will be screened behind there. So in essence, it is not a tower. It is an articulated architectural feature of the building, and antennas will be hidden behind there. Regarding service, regardless of the coverage of Sprint, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and so forth, the fact is Singular needs that coverage. When we have gaps in our service, we lose customers because of dropped calls. There's a wave of wireless internet, the need for wireless internet these days, and that also creates a demand. So we are not going through this effort just to have a spot there. We really are in dire need of that coverage there. Thirdly, there was some issue by one of the residents in regard to, I believe, health on that, and we did have a professional engineering firm conduct studies on the ambient radio waves that would emanate from the building, and they are below one percent of the FCC standard. So we're well below any regulations that occur by a factor of one hundred. I stand here before you today to continue to work with you. If there's anything else that we can make the neighbors happy in terms of putting up our installation, or the city, we stand ready to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item forty-eight. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on item forty-eight? Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that what we need to do first is vote on the assert jurisdiction on this matter and then on the matter itself. And so I would like to, one, thank all of my community members who have been very active and are very informed, and I appreciate you being there at all of the hearings and working closely with my office on this issue. As you know, several nearby residents had opposed Singular's appeal, but they believe they did not get a fair hearing. I know we have a city attorney here as well who can respond. They believed that the commission appeared to discount some of their aesthetic arguments and assumed that their real objections were based on health concerns, which they have today again stated, those items which are not based on health concerns, but are in fact based on those items which we have authority in which to act. And so also that we felt that if they had, after the APC hearing, the opponents discovered case law they felt might have produced a different result if the APC had known about it. And as a result of those two factors, the unfair hearing and the case law, the opponents had asked me to bring this matter to the council under Charter Section two forty-five. So I would like us to take action today asserting jurisdiction on this item, that we can also ask the city attorney to be able to respond and opine on the significance of the case law that came to light after the APC hearing. So if we can, Mr. President, like the first, and city attorney, I think we would take first a vote on asserting jurisdiction.
That's correct. Colleagues, for clarification, this is a two-vote item. The first motion of the item before us is to assert jurisdiction. If jurisdiction is asserted, then we do have a course of action requested by Councilmember Gruehl. So let's take a vote now on the assertion of jurisdiction. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Jurisdiction is asserted in this item. And back to Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we, colleagues, we're acting also on this item today, one, because of the break that we're having in assuring that we take action on this item. Normally, we do have a little bit of time between two forty-five and then being able to take action. What I'd like to do is first ask the city attorney, and if he could hold my time, to opine on the effect of the law cited by the opponents.
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Kenneth Fong. I'd just like to respond to, there were several cases cited by both sides. I looked at those letters. Those cases are really not relevant to the issue before you today, and in fact, most of those cases dealing with the Telecommunications Act are outside the Ninth Circuit because those issues are undecided, and they really are not binding upon this body at this time. What I do want to focus the council on is what your discretion and what your role in this process is. Under the Telecommunications Act, you are not to consider any adverse health or environmental effects of these types of installations. So you can't do that. What you can do is you can focus on typical land use criteria, and in this case, it would be aesthetics. So you look at this site, which is in essence a false second story, and the wireless antenna is completely hidden within that second story. And so you focus on the land use, the potential aesthetic aspects of their proposed second-story addition.
Would I ask, Mr. President, if I could have Dan Green? I know that you were not visier. Mr. Landini was at the time the hearing officer, but if you could just give us also a little bit of brief history here for my colleagues.
Yeah, originally, Mr. Landini denied the request. He felt it was too large and not compatible with the neighborhood. On appeal to the South Valley Area Planning Commission, in his report, he suggested that if it had been a little bit smaller in profile, that it might be more appropriate, and that's the action that the Area Planning Commission took. As I read the action of the Area Planning Commission, I get the sense that they were thinking, had this been a shopping center that was two stories, there would be nothing unusual about it. And what they tried to do is create a disguise for the antenna that would, in some respect, look like something that could have been built by Wright, so that the first floor and second floor will have a matching appearance. It won't look like something unusual. So in that respect, the commission was able to make findings that this was compatible with the neighborhood and with the property that it was on.
Colleagues, I know that all of us have had some challenges relative to the placement of cell towers, their proximity, their design, aesthetics, et cetera. And so, again, my constituents have brought some really important issues to the forefront. And what I'd like to be able to do, probably my gut would be able to say, we don't want to have these cell towers, but I know that I don't have that authority under a law that we're working with, without having some of the bases we've talked, you talked about, Mr. City Attorney, in your presentation. What I'd like to do is amend the action of the APC, modify it, to include two additional conditions, which again, my constituents mentioned in their remarks. One was that the maintenance activities of the antenna site shall be limited to the hours of nine AM to six PM Monday through Friday, to limit the impact on the neighborhood. And similarly, that no sign shall be affixed to the screen structure surrounding the antenna and its equipment, so that it is, again, aesthetically not problematic for the Sherman Oaks community near there, Kessler and Burbank. So I would ask that, and I appreciate you all allowing us to take jurisdiction today, that we amend the APC action with those two additional conditions today.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, then we can consider those amendments without objection and vote on the item as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved.
This is the time for our comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. The council will have ten minutes.
Counsel calls for Theopolas Hodge.
Theopolas Hodge.
Please come forward, to be followed by Will.
This was Will.
Miropoulos.
Miropoulos.
And Luisa Padilla.
Ready to speak now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a resident of the eighth district, and there is two things I want to talk about. There is fighting dogs at fifteen thirty-eighth West Sixty-Fifth Place, and there is mini-bike riders always riding around from Sixty-seventh Street to Sixty-Sixth Street every single day, and I want Chief Parks to, Pounds and Parks, to look in on it for me.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Will Miropoulos.
Good morning, my great members of the city council. I'm here today to discuss a potential seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar problem. My name is Will Miropoulos. I'm a graduate of Eric Garcetti Leadership Training Program, and in nineteen ninety-five, I graduated from Antonio Villagosa's Neighborhood Leaders Program. The reason I'm here is to ask your help in regarding to the funding of the neighborhood councils. I live in Echo Park. My greater Echo Park Neighborhood Council is out of touch with the people. Let's go back to when it first started. They had an election. They only had one Latino that had submitted his name for president. They admitted it. That's where the first injustice starts. The population of my Echo Park is about seventy percent Latino. I'm a president of a grassroots group called Concerned Citizens in Echo Park, as Eric knows and maybe Antonio Villagosa remembers from his day when we went up to Sacramento. But if we're going to spend fifty thousand for fifteen council areas, that comes up to be seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. These people have not been trained. In fact, in my district, I haven't seen the other districts, they're fighting for free enterprise for a hotel that will not serve the community but will serve an individual. enterprise for a hotel that will not serve the community but will serve an individual. I've been told that unions are bad, and I don't think, you know, our great city leaders want a neighborhood council to be bashing unions. I've been told that certain color people cannot speak out, especially after we had the great person here, you know, speaking on the harm of racism and prejudice. And I've heard Mr. Smith speak on increasing the power of this neighborhood councils, but they have no training, they're anti-union, they run off at the mouth.
Sir, if I can ask you to conclude, please?
Sure, I'm really happy to. Thank you ever so much, Ms. Padilla. But we're in a budget crisis here, and we cannot afford to spend $750,000 on a bunch of individuals who are not serving their community. $750,000 to create a Frankenstein. If Dr. Frankenstein could have stopped his monster before his monster got going, we would have been better off. This monster has just started. It worked well in Mr. Holman's neighborhood, but in Echo Park, it is not working, it's self-serving, there's not one Latino. I think in Africa, it's called apartheid, and I don't think we should tolerate apartheid in Echo Park or any other. The neighborhood councils are bad, and Mr. Smith and anybody else.
I'm going to ask you to conclude now, sir.
Thank you ever so much, great city leaders, for your time.
Louisa Padilla Maropoulos, followed by Susie Meekins.
I'm going to say good morning, almost close to good afternoon. I've come to you today, in fact, I felt compelled to come here and speak as I felt outraged at what I read at the Los Angeles Times article dated 8/11/3. This was yesterday's Los Angeles Times that had to do with the Rampart scandal. Some of the council persons know me as I have worked on your election campaigns as an organizer. I have been of service to my Echo Park community since 1993, serving the youth of our beloved community. Now, I want all of you to look at me, look at my face, and engrave it to your memory. I am a victim of Rampart abuse. My body will never be the same due to what happened to me at the hands of a Rampart police officer. But you know what? I'm not asking you for pity. According to my doctors, I will be on medication the rest of my life. Here's a little sack to show you what it is that I take on a daily basis to control pain associated with injuries received on this date, because I had to sign a confidentiality I do not even have the right to talk about what happened to me at Echo Park in June of 1997. My life as I knew it ceased to exist on this day. I lost a well-paying career with the city of Los Angeles. I lost my ability to be able to provide for my family. Again, take a look at this face and remember my voice, and let it act as your conscience. How dare you Rampart make a mockery of us victims? I've had people tell me, oh, get over it. Trust me, it's easier said than done, as it feels to me like it happened just yesterday. Recovery has been a long, slow road that I have had to travel with support from my family and my closest friends who saw me crying in pain, who saw me crawling on the floor because I could not get up and walk as the pain was so severe. I am the face of those innocent persons caught up in Rampart corruption crossfire who thought through no fault of their own were in the wrong place at the wrong time. If I had any wrongdoing, I was guilty of planning an arts and crafts class in the Echo Park Boathouse to children on this day. I grew up in a family that embraced police as the ultimate good guy. I was the only one in my family to work in law enforcement 10 years as a police dispatcher. I was proud to wear my uniform.
Ma'am, may I ask you to conclude, please?
Yes, sir. To my credit, no officer ever died on my watch. To have this Rampart thing happen to me left me devastated. Now, when I worked for the city of Los Angeles under the Housing Authority Police Department, I was expected to lie for officers in court. I was badgered by city attorneys to say falsehoods so the officers in question would not get in trouble in court. My supervisor harassed me, yet it fell on deaf ears.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because I would not lie. It created problems for me as I was labeled not a team player, or told by other senior officers that I should have an affair with some officer who had clout and stripes so that the offending officers would leave me alone.
Ma'am, we do have to hear from other speakers.
There is a code of silence, and I violated that code.
Let me ask you to conclude at this time.
When I went before a Board of Commissioner meeting dealing with police brutality and raised my concerns about the bigotry and discrimination.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to ask you to conclude now so we can hear from Susie Meekins next, but we do appreciate you being here with us. Ms. Meekins.
Good member, good morning, all council members. This is just something that I think that should be done for the city, for the community people. There needed to be a one-stop place where community people can go if they have a complaint against an official, an agency, a school, or administrator, just a one-stop place where they can go and get all this information, sit down and talk to somebody without going to 40 different places, making 40 different phone calls, trying to get this information. That's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next time, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, August 13th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. City business, a motion is required.
Mr. Villagosa moves. Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, September 2nd for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Parks is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused November 7th, 12th, and 14th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Excuse granted.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, August 15th to arrive at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Do we have any announcements today? Any announcements today? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Can I ask members of the public to please stand?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know many of us are probably going to be saying some words about Gregory Hines. I was asked by the Community Development Department just to say a couple of things, and so I'll leave much of the biography for the other council members. I believe it was in Council District 15, actually, this week that Mr. Hines was supposed to be participating as part of Tap Week in dancing in our community. And the entire city of Los Angeles mourns with the country to lose this great dancer, mentor, artist, one of the best who has ever lived, born on Valentine's Day in 1946, but who this week was supposed to be gracing us with his most graceful presence, his earthy tap, his incredible smile, and would have been with our young people had cancer not taken him away this week. So I'll let my colleagues say some further words, but on behalf of the city and the Community Development Department and others who are waiting for him in the community, we hope you're looking down on us, Gregory, and tapping away in heaven.
It will be all members. Other members wish to add a few words. Mr. Lovlo.
I just wanted to join with member Garcetti and acknowledge Gregory Hines, and I'll not repeat anything that Mr. Garcetti's indicated, but I had the real pleasure on several occasions to spend time with Gregory. And for my own children who danced at Lula Washington Dance Theater on Pico, Gregory is one of the legends. He was never above dropping in and dancing with the kids unannounced, something that we all love so much about him. But one thing that I don't think many people in LA knew is that he was also very concerned about domestic violence. I remember him on a couple of occasions coming in from New York City or wherever he was in the world to hold fundraisers for many battered women shelters, prototypes, which is a great nonprofit that does a lot of work with battered women. Could always count on Gregory to come in and share a word and some of his own personal testimony, which was an amazing thing to hear. He's a real legend. He's been a role model for many, many children, and he's really been quite a community giver. And so at some point, I'd like to have the council perhaps join with me in considering naming a performing arts center after Mr. Hines at some point when it's a little more fitting. But Gregory, rest in peace. Thank you for all you've done for the young people in this great city.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in honor of Grover Mitchell, who died at age of 73 on Wednesday, August 6. He has been primarily known for his work with Count Basie. He was a jazz trombonist. He was the leader of that band since 1995. He's a member of the Count Basie Orchestra from 1960 to '70 and again from '80 to '84. And under his leadership, he had made several recordings, including the Grammy Award-winning Count Basie Orchestra at the New York Voices. He was also a regular on the Flip Wilson Show, and for a decade, he filled in for a variety of other TV shows. And his one film credit was Lady Sing to the Blues. He leaves his daughter and two sisters and two grandchildren.
Other tributes? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning today in memory of Beatrice Mildred Mallon Noble, who passed away on Friday, August 8. She is survived by her son, a physician in the San Fernando Valley, Dr. Randolph Noble, her daughter Sharon Noble Maxson, and several grandchildren. She was an employee of Pacific Bell for 30 years, and she helped break the glass ceiling there when she was one of the first women to be promoted to the position of engineer. She will be missed by her devoted family and many close friends.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Any final tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.